Hey Ben.
I might be talking to you sooner.
And call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Wednesday, November 9, 2022 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by Legislative Manager Donna Graham, and the pledge will be led by Alderman Moran.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to free our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and clarity and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
I pleasantly welcome the flag of the United States of America, in the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Gueva. Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
And President Worshein.
I am here.
You have fourteen attendants and one absent.
Alderman Gueva did let me know that he was under the weather and wouldn't be joining us this evening. Also present this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Fulton. The mayor advised me that he was going to the Chamber's Citizen of the Year Award. It was for a downtown, Michael Buckley was getting presented with the Citizen of the Year Award, so the mayor had previously planned to attend that. Tonight, we're going to have a discussion with Commissioner Mike Susi from the Hillsborough County. Mike, if you'd care to come up to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Alderman. It's a pleasure to be back here and see so many familiar faces and friends. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I just want to briefly talk about the county budget and how it does impact the City of Nashville, because it does. Whether you consider the impact is going to be diminutive or significant, that's your own personal opinion. I just want to open the door by going back to the meeting of 10/25/22, when Mayor John just stated that we just learned the last recent days that the county is going to increase their bill to the city by $894,000. When you put that together with the state increase in the pension costs, that is over $5 million that the Nashville taxpayers have to pay as a result of state and county decisions. He's right. I can't argue that. He's absolutely right. I can't speak on the 4.1 million on the state part, but I can speak on the $894,000 and how the county came to that. It's important, you know, to understand that county government runs differently than here. When I was an Alderman back in 2014, 2015, I had no idea how county government worked. And now, being there for two years, I think I've got a much better understanding. So, I think this opens the door where I can now have the opportunity to educate the Nashville officials and residents on the workings of county government and county budget, and, in my opinion, the diminutive impact on property taxes. So, I'm going to try to put an answer. It's just a three-page thing. I'll be open to questions if you like, but an answer to why there was a tax increase on the county's fiscal year 2023 budget. The county fiscal year 2023 budget and the resulting increase to municipalities' apportionment of the county tax revenue by the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration saw a 3.2% increase in the county taxes. The county's fiscal year 2023 budget also saw a $2,905,579 decrease to the operational budget over the fiscal year '22, meaning we cut the budget, but you still saw an increase. Since the fiscal year of 2019 in the county budget, there's been a reliance on budgeted surplus to offset an increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. Those years also saw the county's long-term Medicaid obligation, often referred to as the county cap, which is set by the state legislature, increased by $4,388,477. This is an obligation that we're required to pay by the state legislature. Everybody on Medicaid, we pay 50% of that in the county. Over the same period, the budgeted pro-share revenue has decreased, their expenses, excuse me, decreased by $9 million. And while there was a minimal increase to tax revenue to offset this increase, the uncontrollable expenses and decrease in uncontrollable revenue. Since fiscal year 2019, over the past four years, the county's amount to be raised by taxes has only increased by $4 million. The compounding $4,388,477 expense increase in the county cap from fiscal years 19, 20, '21, with no corresponding increase to offset in revenue, together with the $9 million drop of pro-share revenue that we always get, it left us $13,380,477 liability. That's effectively a 23.85% tax increase. Even though we cut the budget, things out of our control, you get a big tax increase. We have the same issues that the city has. We have increased pension costs. We have increased health costs. We have increased labor costs. So, during the fiscal year of 2023 budget development process, the Board of Commissioners commenced its review facing a 33.60 tax increase, and a thorough examination revealed that the department operational budget request increased only 1%. That's all they asked for, was 1% increase in the 2022 operational budget. Yet, it's still required a 33.60 tax increase to support it. The phenomenon can be attributed to the county cap and the pro-share numbers I just spoke about, which the county has no control over. Faced with increased expenses and the challenge of navigating a pandemic that has greatly impacted those in our care, not just at the state's largest jail and the state's largest nursing home, coupled with the recent year's reliance on fund balance, the board was compelled to review the quality and level of services the county currently provides the communities and the taxpayers in proportion to the amount to be raised by taxes. As such, the board sought to understand the level of values of services provided to the public and surrounding communities in relation to the direct cost to the county taxpayer. During the fiscal year of 2023 budget development process, the board's review of county taxes revealed that, on average, for the calendar year 2021, the county tax rate per thousand for all municipalities in Hillsborough County is approximately $1 out of a total average of $22.04 per thousand. The county tax portion of a property's owner's tax bill is, on average, only 4.5% of a resident's tax bill. An increase in the county's amount to be raised by taxes has significantly less impact on the county taxpayer than the same proportional increase from a local municipality, state, or local education entity. To understand what an increase in the county tax rate means for a resident, if we're going to use the 2021 tax apportionment figures from the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration and the U.S. Census Bureau of Median Value of Household Property in Hillsborough County, for the median value being approximately $287,900, an increase of 3.20, which we've just increased it, to the county taxes equals an average of approximately $9.21 a year. 3.2 is $9.21 per year. It bears repeating, an increase in the county's amount to be raised by taxes has significantly less impact on the county taxpayer than the same proportional increase from a local municipality, state, or local education entity. So, the question has to be asked is why did the City of Nashville's total county tax apportionment increase by 0.85% over 2021, an increase of $884,807? To understand that, you have to know how county taxes are apportioned. So, how county taxes are actually apportioned, the commissioners, we put together a budget, and then it's submitted to our county convention, our county delegation, you know, at that point. They have final say of what the budget is going to be. Once a county budget has been adopted by the county convention, it is forwarded to the Department of Revenue Administration's Municipal Services Division. There, it is reviewed to ascertain that the budget and the minutes agree and the amount to be raised by taxes is correct. Upon verification of the taxes, the Commissioner of Revenue Administration apportions that tax to each city and town in the county. On a yearly basis, the department conducts an equalization survey of all taxable property in the state. The survey also calculates what percentage of the equalized county valuation of each municipality represents. The percentage of the county valuation is the basis for the county tax apportionment. The amount of the county tax to be raised for a particular county is multiplied by the percentage of county valuation for a particular municipality, and that results in the municipality's portion of what the county tax is going to be assessed. In summary, the county convention adopts the county budget, including the amount of taxes to be raised. The equalization survey calculates what percentage of the county valuation each municipality represents, and by multiplying the amount of taxes to be raised by the municipality's percentage of total county valuation, we arrive at the municipality-county tax assessment. It's important to understand that Hillsborough County itself does not decide how much the municipality pays. This allocation is set by the DRA and is based on the annual equalization survey, which it conducts. So, at this point, as of today, when you look at your tax bill, you can see that the county portion is far lower than city, local school. In fact, it's showing up to $1.20 at this point, okay? The 3.2%, the Revenue Administration has not set the number yet. We expect to get that for the next couple of days. My belief, and I'm really good at getting this wrong by a penny or two, is it's probably going to go up to probably a buck 24, buck 25 for that 3.2%. That means, like I said, you're going to pay about $9 to $14 more a year. To me, I think that's a very, very diminutive impact on the city budget at this point. Now, I don't like any tax increase, but we have to understand, we have the same things going on that you have, and when you take a $9 million hit of money that's not coming in and a $4 million hit that you're obligated to pay, it's very, very hard. I'll just conduct my final summary. The 2022 operational budget without OPER, the American Rescue Plan, was $121,92,105. This year's 23 operational budget, we cut the budget to $118,856.526, for a decrease of $2,905.579. The amount to be raised by taxes is $57,937.19. Our pro-share was revenue. If we talk about revenue, it was only $7 million. It should have been more, like 15, 16 million. We brought in $5 million through the registry. Nursing Home brings in about $25 million a year, and the sheriffs, through RITS and other things that they do, $1 million, and then we have some other things going on like rentals or whatever. Last year, we need to talk about surplus, because your budget is set by how much surplus we have. Last year, we used $8 million of surplus to mitigate your increase in taxes. This year, to keep the tax rate at the 3.2, we ended up using 9.9 million. To be honest, I could have used more, or we could have used more. We could have used 14 million, and you'd have a 0% tax increase. That's a dangerous, dangerous road to go down, because a budget needs to be sustained by revenue and taxes. If you put $10 million into an operational budget, and then next year, that budget is level funded, and that $10 million isn't there, we're already $10 million in the hole. Add in increased pension costs, add increased health costs, add increased labor costs because of inflation, we could start about $15 million in the hole. It's a goal of mine and my fellow commissioners is to get away from the surplus and start bringing it down to maybe next year, $6 million or $7 million, and then $4 million, because we can survive $4 million. But if we keep going with surplus fund, and the surplus money is gone, we're in trouble. There's nothing else we can cut. You saw we cut the budget last year. The only thing we can cut is services. When I talk about cutting services, that's labor. I do not want to cut sheriffs. I don't want to cut nurses. I don't want to cut correctional officers. Right now, we have 298 beds at the nursing home with a waiting list. We've got 245 beds or so filled. We can't fill, really, maybe five more beds, because we don't have enough nurses to safely do it. Our correctional officers are being paid like $18.75 an hour to start. That's Burger King wages. Who wants to do that job? So, we know there's going to be labor increases. So, that's where we are right now. I guess that's, in a nutshell, why the county budget is where it's at, and if I can, I'd like to actually get another tax increase next year to bring down the surplus amount that we're using, because I do not want to see us get a 54, 55% tax increase three, four years down the road to prevent layoffs. Now, when we talk about like one year, last year, the commission asked for a 12.5% tax increase. We did. That's a scary number, 12.5%. But when you're talking 12.5% of a buck 20, that was about $40, $45 that, for an annual payment, she would have to pay. So, I'm saying that the county tax is not really that impactful to the city. Last thing I just want to share, Temple Street, that's our diamond in the rough. Nashville is the county seat. It is. And there's been some talk about selling that beautiful building, and if we do sell it, that means you would have to move the Registry of Deeds, would have to move the county attorneys. That's a lot of work. Would have to have a place to put them in, and that would cost about $12 million to fix the old buildings on the Goffstown properties. So, I think we can fix that building with about $3 million, put new HVAC, new plumbing, new electrical, put the lipstick on the pig, make it look really, really beautiful. And the register wants to be there. It's a county seat. The county attorneys want to stay there. They don't want to go to Goffstown. They can leave their office and go across the street to the court. So, we're going to invest some money and make that a beautiful building without changing the character of the historic value of that building. I'll be setting up an office in that building, hopefully December, at least by January. I would invite anybody who wants to talk about the county budget. We can set up a date. We can meet there, and we can talk further about that. I'm open for questions if that's appropriate. If not, I just want to thank you for your time. I really, really enjoyed speaking with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Susi. Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. And Commissioner Susi, thank you so much for coming out and talking to everybody, the people in Nashville and us around the horseshoe. I do appreciate it, and I truly do appreciate your talking about wanting to bring the use of the surplus down, because you're absolutely right. $4 million is about really what we should be sticking around.
I agree.
And also, I do want to also say that I agree with what you say about the county budget. It does impact, because every $45 that we hit, our taxpayers is an impact. You know, we talk about doing, changing the elderly tax credit, the veterans' tax credit, so this is $45, $30, $20, and it starts to impact. So, every little penny counts. And while I agree with you that the municipalities have the biggest impact, obviously, our budget, our taxpayers pay for our budget here, they're paying for your budget, they're paying for the state budget, which you're getting creamed like we're getting from the state.
We're all getting creamed.
So, I truly can relate to that, yeah. But the thing is, you also have a larger base to spread your budget on, and I do appreciate, I mean, as a state rep, soon to be ex, and as an Alderman, I do appreciate you trying to cut the budget, but I did want to clarify that you have a larger base to spread your budget across than we do. And I'm sorry, I did have a question here. It was actually about Temple Street. We did put that, if I'm not mistaken, in the budget this past year, right?
Yeah, you put in, yes. So, what we put in is $750,000 for the HVAC. So, it needs a lot of other things if we're going to actually make that, the building that we need that to be made. It's not going to cost the city or the residents anything, because we're using OPER money for that, American Rescue Plan money.
I know. I was on that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for, and I really did appreciate that. One of the things that I did want to mention to you is something we do in this city, and we've even said that we don't do it as well as we should, and that's our SURF, and trying to look forward as to when we need to replace things. One of the things that I had talked to some of the department heads was that you really don't have something like that in the county. When something happens, we suddenly, I found that we were kind of scrambling trying to fix things, which can add to your budget. You're doing a really great job with your budget, but I'd like to see like a, just for future, I'd, you know, like to see like a 10-year plan as to how you want to upgrade. We know Temple Street has been kind of failing for a while and various other things. We had the women's prison that needed to be built, and suddenly it just kind of came on us at once, and that's what hurts the taxpayers. And sometimes Nashville doesn't do a great job either. I'm not saying we're perfect, but I'd like to see the county do a little bit better in that respect.
Thank you. May I respond?
Yes, please.
So, you're right, we do have a much larger area for the taxes, but as I stated in my presentation, the county doesn't do that. It's the Department of Revenue that they're going to apportion the amount of taxes each municipality is going to have to pay based on their calculation of the total valuations of the properties within the community. So, we went with the 3.2. Actually, if I remember correctly, the commission recommended a higher. I think we were looking at about 6% to 8% tax increase. This would have lowered our amount of money that we had to put into surplus and go in the right direction, but at the end of the day, the delegation county convention had the final say on that, and it was 3.2. It's 3.2. I just hope next April, we're in budget season, that we can have some serious discussions before that, so we can talk about the consequential disaster that is sitting there if, in fact, we start running out of surplus funds and our operational budget, we can't even level fund that. And, yeah, as far as SURF, that's one of the things that I talked about with the first year that I became on the county, about setting up a plan for county sheriff cars, like we did with fire trucks and police cars, and how long they were going to be, because they were pretty much running by the seat of the pants. If we need a new car, we're going to get it. But I can gladly say to you that anything that these departments needed, we never had to go into the well and get extra money. It was well thought out. It was well within their operational budget, and they were able to purchase what they needed.
Can I just ask one other comment and question about the nursing home? I want to give kudos to the county nursing home. We're the only nursing home that makes money in any respect.
Yes.
And they've always done, whoever the directors has always done it for.
David Ross. He's amazing.
But prior to that, the gentleman, then I can't think of his name, he was incredible as well. We've always been very lucky in that respect, and I'm glad that you pointed out that we have more beds than we can man, because we can't get the people and so on. And the pro-share was cut this year.
Yes.
Partially because, I think it was because of COVID and not being able to fill these beds, because we don't have the, do you feel that pro-share will change and things will get a little bit better if we can get the staff?
I don't know. I wish I could answer.
I appreciate the honesty, yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming out tonight, Commissioner Susi. My question, request, really, you obviously had some written remarks. Is it okay for you to forward that to all of us on the board? I tried to follow you.
Right. It was a lot.
Goodwill Hunting, where the numbers were swinging around my head. That was it. And I would absolutely take you up on that offer to go down and visit you and talk about the budget.
Sure.
Being on the Budget Committee, I need to better understand that.
Yes, I made, actually, everything that I talked about and the confusing stuff about how things are calculated, I actually put a little synopsis of what the actual numbers are together, and I will be happy to make a copy for it. Madam Chair, should I get them to you or Madam President?
Yeah, you can send them to me.
Okay, I'll send them to you, and then you can pass them out, but.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to give that to everybody. Thank you, Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Commissioner Susi, fair job in explaining everything. And just to everybody in the public, one of the people that you do work with are the state reps.
Yes.
They are. You work hand in hand. Commissioners, you kind of set the direction and stuff like that, but when it comes down to the budget, other different things and procedures.
You have to say.
It does come down to the representatives. We do get notified. We do meet up in Goffstown, to which I cannot figure out, Goffstown, Nashville is the seat of Hillsborough County. So, you work there to rejuvenate the old courthouse and to keep Nashville as the seat of the county government, not only has deep historical value to somebody like myself, but I think to many other citizens here. So, I'd like to see that also, you know, go forward. It'd be shameful to lose the county seat to Goffstown, so we'll leave it at that.
I can't tell you how many hours I worked on convincing my fellow commissioners and other people that were interested in purchasing this property on why we couldn't sell this property. As long as I am commissioner, and I've got at least two more years, but as long as I'm commissioner, that property, I will fight to keep that property, but money's now being dedicated. We're already put out some bids to look at what needs to be done. We're going to do new windows, paint, and all of the things in the interior that makes it run, and we're going to make it a comfortable building for our employees to work. We have the sheriffs in there, county attorneys, and the registrar of deeds.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation this evening, and we look forward to getting your documents in via email.
Thank you. I'll have them to you by next week, Madam President. Thank you very much. I really enjoyed being here.
Thank you. Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objections, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of July 18th and October 24th. Accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Chief Kevin Rourke regarding MT-55 mobile command center, from Dorothy Clark, Deputy Corporation Counsel, John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, correction to analysis for Resolution R.22065 and Resolution R.22067. And from John Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding Board of Public Works' recommendation for Resolutions R.22065 and R.22067.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I have two sign-ups. Karen Bill?
As usual, I request that you don't interrupt me for time. I've got my own timekeeping device. Thank you. So, Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place in Nashville. I watched the four-hour personnel meeting last week, and after doing so, I urge and plead with the Board of Aldermen to post the position of Administrative Services Director to attract outside candidates to see what they can bring to the table. Some of the takeaways, the mayor seems to think that a person that knows all the players makes him the right fit, which I don't agree with. Most organizations that hire an interim director hire them for a minimum of six months, not one. And they are looking for someone who does come in and rock the boat along with specific goals that they will achieve in 30, 90, and 180 days. I know this because I've filled positions in turbulent agencies as an interim executive director. Mr. Cummings seems to think that he was not going to come in and rock the boat, that it would, this is his quote, "That it would be six to nine months or a good period of time to determine what the options and potential deficits are." Alderman Lopez pointed out that Mr. Cummings did not answer Alderman Sullivan's questions, which was true, about specific examples of how he manages projects versus people. Alderman Dowd said he never had a problem with accessibility, but that's because there's two sets of rules. Mr. Cummings feels he's a good communicator for those that work with him, which he said twice, "work with him." Well, unfortunately, he treats me a lot differently than he treats you. Those two sets of standards, one for residents that ask questions, send emails. This is how he replies, for example. I sent him an email, and I said, "Hi, you know, hi, Tim. I'm looking for the minutes to this meeting and when the next meeting is and the location." Day one. Day two, nothing. I said, "Just want to make sure you got it." "Hi, Tim." You know, we know each other. Send him another one. Day three, "Any chance you're, you know, they could have given me this information?" Day four, pursuant to the Right to Know Act, like, "I have to say this." Day five, I get an email back from him. No, "Dear Karen, dear Ms. Bill, dear nothing." Five words. "I have no such record." No reply, no name, no "Have a good day," no "Sorry about that, I'll look into it." "I have no such record." I know there's someone, there are several people that get these five-word answers. I don't know if that's his max for replies to people he doesn't like or doesn't want to answer, but, you know, they wait the five days. I asked for two job descriptions the other day, and by the way, I think he really lacks the professional maturity to do the job. I asked for a couple of job descriptions the other day from HR, and I called today to see if I would have them for this meeting, and they said, "No." Every single email is treated as right to know. It goes from HR to Administrative Services, who goes back to HR, that gets the information, that sends it through Administrative Services. I was like, "You're kidding me. Why not just reply to the email like a normal person?" I think that, you know, this was a position created for Ms. Kleiner. She made everyone copy her on every single email. And every department in the city has a leader. Let them lead. Honestly, I don't think the position is even necessary. It had gone away. Here's my recommendation. Hire me as your interim Administrative Services Director. And my 90-day goal will be to abolish the position, get rid of the red tape, and allow City Hall employees the dignity to use the common sense to manage interactions with the residents in a professional, respectful manner. Thank you very much.
Matthew Guthro?
I'm sorry?
I was calling the next person.
Matthew Guthro, 104 Bon Lane. Good evening. I'm here to express my concerns about Timothy Cummings' appointment to lofty position of Director of Administrative Services. I'm not here to question his qualifications or play politics with the nomination. I did watch that meeting that my, the speaker before me talked about, and I was concerned about the vagueness of his answers for somebody being in this interim position already. As a resident and taxpayer, I have serious concerns that the engineer of our economic engine in this city is now going to assume the conductor role of this train. It seems like too much responsibility for anyone to reasonably wield here at City Hall. If you truly want Mr. Cummings to be successful in this new role, you must first unburden him with his responsibilities as Director of Economic Development. So with this appointment, you need to be asking, how is the search for our new Economic Development Director going? Do we have any candidates? When can we realistically expect someone in this new role? I think you need to look at tabling this appointment until we have a clear understanding of the answers to these questions. Please allow Mr. Cummings and the mayor to focus their attention on finding Mr. Cummings' successor before we permanently increase his responsibilities. We all want the city to move forward and the staff to excel in their roles. It's okay to be ambitious. I just think with this move, we're really biting off more than you can chew. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Oscar Velasquez, 76 Boville Avenue, Nashua, and Jason Tollersky, 5 Shakespeare Road, Nashua, to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants with terms to expire December 1, 2025, and Andrew Pearlman, 20 Trafalgar Square, Suite 100, Nashua, to the Housing Trust Fund Committee with a term to expire December 1, 2025, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel, Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection. I'll declare the reports of the October 4th and October 24th Budget Review Committees be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the July 20th, August 17th, and November 2nd, 2022 Finance Committees minutes be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the July 11th, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Director of Administrative Services.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Timothy Cummings as the Director of Administrative Services with indefinite terms serving at the pleasure of the mayor. Mr. Cummings is not with us this evening. He'll be sworn in at later date. Business and Industrial Development Authority. There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Jaren Thomas Slattery, 17 Berkeley Street, Nashua, to the Business and Industrial Development Authority with a term to expire October 1, 2025. I don't think Mr. Slattery is here this evening. He will also be sworn in at later date. Housing Trust Fund, there being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Emily Vassar, 98 Chandler Street, Apartment 1, Nashua, to the Housing Trust Fund Committee with a term to expire October 1, 2025. Is Emily here this evening? Come right up and take the oath of office, please. Don't be shy.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Housing Trust Fund Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God. Thank you.
Housing Trust Fund Committee. Nope, we just did that one, sorry. Cable Television Advisory Board, there being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Ronnie Camille, 79 Chandler Street, Number 2, of Nashua, to the Cable Advisory Board with a term to expire November 1, 2025. Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Camille, please come forward to take the oath.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cable Television Advisory Board of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God. Thank you.
Congratulations. Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee, there being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Laura Santa, 18 Grassmere Lane, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee with a term to expire November 1, 2025. Is Ms. Santa here? She will be sworn in at later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 22065, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $7,500,000 for various improvements and equipment at the Solid Waste Department for Hills Landfill.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-22065 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. May I speak briefly to my motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a very important bond that is before us. Those of you may think like myself, our landfill is a gym. But like everything else, it has a life expectancy. So anything we can do to improve the life expectancy of landfill is actually a tax benefit to the taxpayers. At some futuristic point, unfortunately, it's going to get to the point where we'll have to have a transfer station perhaps or some other, if no other technology is available, to remove the trash. Second portion of this bond will go to the sewer fund. I think, as you know, if you heard in the past, we're relining pipe with a cement coating and everything. So taking care of our sewer infrastructure is keynote. It's a lot cheaper down the road than digging up the street and laying new pipes. So I do, I would like you to vote with me in passage of this particular bond item. Thank you, Madam President.
Motion is for final passage, is there discussion? Alderman Cle?
Thank you again, Madam President. I would like to add to that. Nashua should be very proud, I know it's going to sound silly, but it sounds very, very proud of our landfill. We are the only landfill in the state of New Hampshire that is at where we're at. We have space to grow. We do not take in trash from any other place. In other words, we're not taking it from New York. We're not taking it from Massachusetts. It's only from Nashua residents here. We have expanded it. It does, as my colleague has said, it does have a life expectancy of not as long as we would hope. But I do think that we have to do everything we possibly can. They're already doing it now, like putting crushed glass over it and so on. So we keep the odors and things down by it. But it is something to be proud of. I sit up in Concord or have sat up in Concord, and I listen to other issues with the landfills that are up north and so on. And they're running out of space. They're going to eventually have to start paying to have their trash removed to other states. Maybe Maine, maybe Massachusetts, because they're taking it in from that. We've done it right here, and we should be proud. And I think this money well spent, so thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I would just add to what my colleague said, maybe perhaps clarify. I also am very proud of the landfill, but I'm also equally proud of the people managing it. I think particularly, you kind of hear sort of a stereotypical dismissal of people who are working union jobs or working for the city. But these are dedicated people who are highly educated, very effective, very hardworking. And we benefit from that as a city. So I think we should congratulate the men and women who are working and managing this resource because it benefits our city so much, and I don't think they often get praised for that.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Cobell.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
President Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2265 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 22067, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $6,394,575 for the city's sewer infrastructure program and sewer structures.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 22067 by roll call pursuant to Chapter, Section 49. I'd like to speak to it just briefly.
Alderman Dow.
Alderman O'Brien spoke very eloquently about this as well, but this is an ongoing thing that we have to do year to year to keep up with our infrastructure and highly suggest that we pass this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
President Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2267 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2270, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $675,000 to purchase a new MT-55 mobile command center for the police department.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22070 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
President Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2270 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2271, authorizing the mayor to enter into a third amendment to concession agreement with Granite Diamond LLC.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R 22071.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2271 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance O 22026, authorizing stop signs at the intersection of Blueberry Lane and Old Coach Road.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to amend O-22026 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of recommended amendments made by the Committee on Infrastructure. And I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Jettie.
So this came before the Infrastructure Committee. I was the sponsor of this ordinance. And what the amendment does, it just corrects a typographical error that was on the proposed ordinance to make sure the stop sign is located on the right side of the street. And so that was unanimously adopted by the Infrastructure Committee, and I ask that the board pass this amendment.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. As Chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, we're in total agreement with Alderman Jettie and do encourage you all to vote positively on this and with the next potential motion that will be made and have this passed for the citizens. Thank you, Madam President.
You bet. Motion is to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Jettie.
So I now move for final passage of O 22026 as amended, and I could speak briefly on that.
Alderman Jettie.
So this was a request relayed to me by the Department of Public Works regarding the intersection of Blueberry Lane and Old Coach Road. There's the growth of trees or shrubbery that has created a blind spot there. And so for safety, the Department of Public Works is recommending or asking that we put up these stop signs to make that intersection safe. So and I ask that you adopt it. It was unanimously passed by the Infrastructure Committee.
You've heard the motion, is there further discussion on the motion? Alderman Lopez.
I just want to compliment my fellow Alderman for his diligence to a necessary stop sign and point out that he has caught more than a few of those. The stop sign is in the wrong area or the language isn't perfect. And I appreciate it. I appreciate his attention to detail, so I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay. Motion is for final passage as amended. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 2226 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Ordinance O 22029, authorizing stop signs at the southeast and southwest corners of Parish Hill Drive at its intersection with Parish Hill Drive.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of O-22029 and may speak briefly to the motion.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. This motion was brought forward by Alderman Guever, who unfortunately cannot make it this evening. But I'm sure he'd be pleased if this particular board passes this ordinance. It was discussed at the Committee of Infrastructure without objection, and we did get the language correct on this one, so. So I do recommend support with me for final passage. Thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance 2229 is declared duly adopted.
Third reading of Ordinance O. 22030, increasing the elderly tax exemptions.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of O. 22-030, and I would like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. This, the reason for this legislation, as we all know, property valuations went up this past year. We noticed that there was an opportunity to raise these exemptions to keep pace with that extension. As we went through it, and as we vetted this through committee, this is now the third reading of it because there was not a fiscal note attached, and there was, and it went to committee. And sitting with, getting communication back and forth with CFO Griffin, understanding the impact to the taxpayers, the minimal impact to taxpayers worked out to be around, for me personally, it was about $10 to $15, so I thought that that was worthy, and I know that the mayor supported it, so I would appreciate your support as well.
Thank you. I know Alderman Guever asked me to relay for him, that he's very proud of this legislation, and he would really encourage us to support it. Alderman Como.
Just thank you, Madam President. I was happy to co-sponsor this as well. I think it's a good thing that we can take care of one of our more vulnerable populations in the city, as the previous speaker mentioned, you know, keeping up in pace with the rising costs and rising home valuations. This is something that's been done every couple of years. It's been a few years since we've last done it, so I think the time is a good time to do it. And I'd like to thank the committee for their discussions on it and their unanimous support of it, and I'm happy to see this swiftly pass through tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, when it first came up, I was concerned about the increase, the impact of the budget would be. After the discussion at our meeting, it was, it was supported by the mayor and CFO Griffin, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and I certainly don't have any problem kicking in extra money to help the people that are going to be benefited from this. The only other comment I want to make is, we, as the City of Nashua, are one of the most generous in this area of all the cities and towns in the state of New Hampshire, so I think that's something to be proud of as well.
Alderman Lopez.
In the committee, I kind of commented that the implications of reducing taxes and creating an exemption for some is you're sort of raising them for others. But I was impressed with the intention and the sincerity that was presented in authorizing this and sponsoring it, because I think we do need to look at equity and exactly how certain sub-populations pay, and I think particularly seniors, they've spent a lifetime working and contributing to systems that we all sort of inherit, benefit from, and have to contribute to too. So I think it's important for us to recognize that when there are hard times, there's a benefit to everybody, to recognizing the value of the people who may be disproportionately impacted by it. So I'm happy to support this as well. I like the direction that's going in, but I also maintain that we need to figure out a way to balance the proportion of privately-owned properties versus commercially-owned properties as well.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President, and I too am going to support this, and I want to give some clarification, though, to the public at large. I had a number of people who called me and said, "You just keep pushing more and more burden on me because I don't qualify for this," and someone of eighty years old can move in and suddenly get it. So I'd like to give some clarifying statements. One is, no, you can't just move in here and you suddenly qualify for it. You have to have lived in that particular home in the city for five years. So there is a date thing. The one thing that we've done in the past that we did not do this time is that we did not just up the exemption amount. We've often looked at the means test and the assets and the income, and we didn't do that this time. And I'm not making comment to that, I just want to point that out, that we didn't do the same as we've done in the past. I also want to point out that for 2022, because of the exemption as it exists now, there are 164 residents who do not pay any taxes. In 2023, that'll go up to 216, and in 2024, 335. And this is not a bad thing. As was pointed out, these are people that have lived here for a long period of time, and these numbers, if I'm not mistaken, are basically created because they look at the age categories that people fall into, and every time they go into an E1 to E2 or E2 to E3, they're going to have a higher exemption. And that's how we get to where we get. I did have some people that have contacted me and said, "Well, these people aren't paying for fire or police or road paving and so on," and yes, that is the truth, but that is something we have to consider. Now, having said all that, we have future exemptions and credits coming down the road, and we have to think, as I mentioned to Commissioner Susi, every $5 here, $20 here, $40 here, suddenly becomes $100, $150, $200, maybe $300. And that could mean whether or not someone can get their prescription or have a MEO. So we do have to weigh everything we're doing. It's great to be good-hearted, and I will support this, and I will vote, like as I said, in favor, but we do have to be considerate also to those who do not qualify for these things. So thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to my colleagues for bringing this to the board. I just wanted to comment on my colleague from Ward 3. I haven't heard any negative feedback from the community at large about this particular piece of legislation, but I would say to those folks that are speaking to you that these people have paid their dues over quite some time. They paid their taxes. We, as a society, need to take care of our elderly, and I think that's what my colleagues from Ward 9, 1, and 4, I'm sorry, 6, were thinking. And I think the more people that are aware that these are folks that have given back to the city through taxes, whatever, and working, they're most likely on social security and other social safety nets, and I think there's another social safety net that'd be great for the elderly population of Nashua. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support this. I mean, in three years, going up to 335 people out of a city of 90,000 is really nothing, in my opinion. It's small potatoes, and so it doesn't seem that would be that big a deal to do it. I mean, our seniors are, you know, like you said, people who have been here and have put in their dues to cover us, and I think we can do the same for that many people. You know, to Alderman Moran's point, we do have more credits coming before this board. For those of people who didn't watch the personnel meeting, I had a veterans one that also was up for discussion and got tabled, so I'm hoping I get that support too in the future, because I didn't get it in that meeting because it got tabled. So I'm willing to support this one. I think it's a good, good-looking piece of legislation and happy to see it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
I would just add to what my colleague from Ward 3 pointed out. In terms of eligibility, you have to have something to tax, so you have to own property, and you have to live eighty years, which I aspire to do, so I think it's not quite so cut and dry as, oh, they have something I don't want, I don't have. Like, we can all work our way towards that. So I, again, will support this bill, and I encourage people who are feeling like they're getting short-changed to reach out, get involved, and see if we can work out something that recognizes what their needs are. But I don't think this is just charity. I think this is recognition of accomplishment.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to point out that, you know, there's a, there's a group, you don't have to get to eighty. It starts sooner than eighty. But it's not just a question of being old. It's all, there's also an asset test, and I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, maybe Alderman Sullivan could remind us what the asset test is. So it's not just people who are, who reach that age, it's people who reach that age and don't have, you know, a certain level of assets that, you know, that makes them qualify for this. So if that would be permissible, Madam President, to ask Alderman Sullivan that question?
Thank you. Happy to, as my colleague from Ward 3 favorously flips through the ordinances. It is a separate ordinance. It's not connected, so it would need to be revised accordingly after much thought, but if I could speak to it as we extend time.
Yes.
But I also was contacted about this, and, and truthfully, when we looked at how many people were eligible for this, it was a set number, and we were able to carry that number forward, thus the math that I was able to talk about earlier. If I went into kind of, for lack of a better term, kind of adjust or monkey around with that number, that would grow the number of people, thus impacting the Nashua taxpayer even more. I know that I'm on record as trying to keep that tax rate as low as possible. I did not want to be hypocritical in raising the tax rate for others through this legislation, so I wanted to keep it, work on one end of it. I would be happy to look at the other piece of the ordinance.
It's right here.
As we go through in time, because I know that that has been expressed to me as well.
That's, that's the RSA.
This right here?
That's the RSA, but I think our exemptions are right here. Yep, those are the, no, those are the.
Those are the actual amounts.
Right, this is the, the single asset, the married asset.
Oh, right here?
Yep.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, so the single asset limit is $150,000, and that is the same for not only a single but also a married couple, $150,000 in assets. And I believe it's starting April, is it April 1st?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They apply January 1st, I think.
I'll sit, Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The motion is for final passage of Resolution 2230. Further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance 2230 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. 22072, relative to the acceptance of $58,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice and to Police Grant Activity 2023, Violence Against Women Grant Program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderwoman Karen. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 22073, relative to the acceptance of $330,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety and to Police Grant Activity FY 2023, Opioid Abuse Reduction Initiative, OARI grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 22074, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,500,000 for the turbine work and various repairs and improvements to the Jackson Mills and Mine Falls hydroelectric facilities.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 28, 2022. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance O. 22035, authorizing a stop sign on Conant Road at its intersection with Searls Road.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Como, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance O. 22036, increasing the disabled tax exemption.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons. Did I get everybody? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment. I have one person signed up, Michael O'Connor.
Yeah, good evening. Michael O'Connor, 42 Berkeley Street, Nashua. Nashua recently received another unfavorable court ruling. On 26 October, the Supreme Court of New Hampshire in a three-to-two opinion ruled in favor of Mrs. Laura Cohon against the City of Nashua. As can be read in this opinion, the court ruled that the city clearly violated the right-to-know law. An excerpt from that opinion. Because the record demonstrates that the city knew or should have known that its blanket denial violated the right-to-know law. This is not the first time in the past two years the city brazenly denied access to information and/or required costly, protracted legal proceedings to compel its compliance. Fortunately, some citizens have been willing to lodge legal complaints, even though in doing so, they have been subject to derision and even outrageous slander by city officials for doing so. Thankfully, these citizens have been prevailing in court. To refresh your memory of a Hillsborough Superior Court discovery motion ruling dated 14 July 2021 against the city, the court's opinion includes the following statements. The city's actions or inaction shows that it was disregarding the plaintiff's discovery request or misleading the plaintiff about the availability of responsive documents. The city simply took no action whatsoever until many months after the initial discovery request, and thus acted in a dilatory, a delay-inducing, vexatious manner. The court is concerned about the city's candor and if the city attempted in good faith to resolve the discovery dispute over the documents at issue. Will the Board of Aldermen address the city's lack of transparency? I noted that a previous Alderwoman, Elizabeth Liu, did attempt to raise issues stated in the July 2021 ruling at a Board of Aldermen meeting on 28 September 2021, only to be interrupted and rudely dismissed by corporate counsel. See the meeting minutes, pages 26 to 28. Why does the city reflexively disregard citizens' information requests and repeatedly violate the right-to-know law? Does anyone in the board wonder? What is there to hide? Don't take my word. Read the opinions. Decide for yourself. You were elected to the policymaking entity in the city. I submit now, two courts are on record that Nashua is not making reasonable efforts to adhere to New Hampshire's right-to-know law, and that city officials have made misleading statements to obstruct discovery requests. The board should ensure the city faithfully abides by the laws of New Hampshire, and that city policies are clarified and/or improved such that the city is not routinely violating the right-to-know law. As stated in RSA 91A, openness in the conduct of public business is essential to a democratic society. Thank you.
Remax, please, members of the board. I'll sit over here on the second night. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of things. First off, I just want to say, it's Friday, Veterans Day. Happy Veterans Day to all of you in this chamber that have served, and certainly my father and stepfather and grandparents before me, way before me. Thank you for your service. That's why I put the, one of the reasons I put the veteran tax credit out there is to support the veterans that need it. So I just want to say Happy Veterans Day. A couple of things. I just want to congratulate the city yesterday on holding really good elections as far as the way they came off, as far as the moderators, the ward clerks, the poll workers doing a great job. I know we have Tim Senate out there who was a moderator for Ward 7, so thank you for doing your work. I thought Clerk Healy did a fantastic job yesterday. I saw him at Ward 8 a couple of times, and any problems that were had throughout the city, he had attention to that. I know things weren't exactly 100% perfect. They never are, but things went off, you know, pretty flawlessly as far as that goes with a few minor mistakes. Another thing is, I just want to congratulate, you know, he often says a lot about gems of the city. Well, he's also a gem, Alderman O'Brien, for winning his race yesterday and heading back to the city, to the state, to protect hopefully our city as he has done many times in the past. So congratulations, Alderman O'Brien. And lastly, I just want to say that I'm proud of our Alderwoman, Shoshana Kelly, for her race for Executive Counsel. It's, for all of us, we've all run races, and it's hard to do. You know, it takes a lot out of us, and it's a lot of energy, and that's just in Nashua, and it could, most of us, just our little ward. So when you have to go outside the city and, you know, fight for that, it's a lot of work. So I'm really proud of the race she ran. Nashua was resoundingly positive for her, but it's just, it's hard to get outside the city, and, you know, I think the results yesterday were, for everybody, resoundingly heard by everyone, by Nashua voters. And, you know, Nashua was definitely ready for a woman of color to be on the executive council. It just wasn't that way for surrounding cities. So thank you for running and putting yourself out there. Not easy to do, and I appreciate it anyway. So thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to thank the election workers at the wards and Mr. Healy and his crew in the city clerk's office. They did a great job. I know what it's like to work 12, 15 hours. I did it for 20 years in Ward 7, so it's a lot of work, and I know Tim got a lot of help, and I talked to the police officer there, you know, and everybody was happy and really excited about voting. It may have taken a little bit of time, but that shows that people went out and voted, and I think that's... And I think that's wonderful news. And also to State Rep. O'Brien, congratulations. God bless you because you and I started off there and you're still going and going. And Alderwoman Kelly, great job. And can always turn around and make it the next time. I love it. The other thing is, I don't know how many of you young Aldermen will be going to the senior outing on Sunday at the Marriott Hotel, but I was told last Thursday that all the tickets had been given out, which is great. So it means that people are trying to get back out and be in groups and working together. So we're looking forward to it. I was privileged that someone happened to see my name in the paper, that it was the outing, and made me this beautiful basket to be raffled off. I was going to keep it, but I have to. And it's just, I appreciated it very much and I couldn't thank them enough for taking that time. The other thing I'd like to do is thank our Nashua Police Department. I don't know if Alderman Moran knows, but we've had a real bad situation up in Ward Seven, up in our area. And the last three days, Ward has been there and there were four arrests. I'm sure you saw the email today. But I can't thank them enough for doing their due diligence because every email that I was getting, trying to send to the police department, they really took care of it. And I was told this afternoon by the chief that the neighbors came out and thanked them and he acknowledged them for doing their due diligence. If you see something, say something. Don't call your alderman, call the police department because I don't carry a gun, so, you know, they are in charge. But I want to thank them wholeheartedly for the work that they did for the last two days. We've just kept our fingers crossed that nothing really bad happens. So thank you so much. And as far as the exemption, the old person here might be able to take care of it next year. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, a couple things. When you get a weapon in your hat, you know, have to. As far as the thing Sunday had a check, make sure it's open up to Tim. One thing, the landfill, I've mentioned it before. People that visit the landfill and only see the front end of it, you only see about 1% of it. And the superintendent of the landfill is more than willing to take any of the Aldermen on a complete tour. Everything they do in there is down to the millimeter because they use GPS in all their vehicles. They have to do it perfectly so that they can maximize the Phase Four. And that's where we're going to get the maximum use out of the landfill because once that's gone, I don't think I'll be here when it's gone. Or will anybody else. So, and the other thing is the DPW building, which is under the guidance and direction of Alderman O'Brien and State Rep. O'Brien, is moving along very well. There was a slight glitch when the brick that they were using the outside came in and it wasn't square. Had to order new brick. New bricks arrived now. In fact, I think I gotta believe some of it's up. And it's moving right along. And I have to say that the people that are going to be occupying the offices in that building have been decades in offices that were, I don't think anybody here would want to work in. They're really bad shape. So it's about time that these people are going to be working in spaces that they can appreciate and enjoy. And the other thing is the 17th is the Joint Special School Building Committee. It is not Thanksgiving evening. I have turkey colt at that time of year. So it's the 17th. Shouldn't be a very long meeting.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to wish a Happy Veterans Day to all those who've served and thank them for their service. I get the honor on Friday to take my dad down to Gillette Stadium for a service down there that they're having for Vietnam-era veterans. He called and begged me to do it, so I guess I have to do it. And I also would like to congratulate our clerk, Dan Healy, on a successful election. Even more impressive, given the fact that he hasn't been here that long. If I was him, when I accepted the offer from the mayor, I would ask for an 11-9 start date, but he didn't and went off pretty well. So congratulations to him and all of his staff. Election, from what I could see from my bouncing around, went off without a hitch anywhere. So that's very impressive. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I also wanted to congratulate the city clerk for his first election under his belt. I was at about 20 different polling locations across District Five and I was just in awe of how many people came out to vote. I was really grateful that everybody really participated in a huge way. The turnout at every single polling location was higher than it's ever been. So I also wanted to let everybody know that the Best Buddies Champion of the Year Gala is the 19th. And Scott was just so inspiring that I got a table, so I'm hoping that you'll all help me fill the table. So that is the 19th in Concord. And if you have a moment to talk to me afterwards or send me an email, I'd love to have you guys there. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I did want to just address the election. I thought that we did a great job here in Nashua. You know, we didn't have long lines in some of the things that you saw, like in other areas of the state, we did very well. And one of the other things too that I noticed at the election was, you know, Alderman Guev, I saw Alderman Guev and, you know, he's on the Republican side, I'm on the Democratic side. But, you know, the two of us were talking to each other at Ward Six. He was checking numbers for his party. And, you know, the people there, even though we're on different sides of the aisle, really, we sat on, stood on different sides, but there was no vitriol this year. There was no, none of that real biting partisan nastiness. I didn't see it. I heard that it went on in a couple of different areas. But for the most part, my, you know, it didn't occur. And what I'm hoping is that we can get past that point where, you know, we have differences of opinion, but we go in, we cast our vote, we have faith in the process. And when the votes are tallied at the end of the day, we accept the results and we move on to the next election. When, if it didn't go our way, we try better to get it to go our way. And, you know, I'm hoping and I'm very hopeful, looking at the result, that that's the direction that this country moves in. So I hope, I'm very hopeful for that. And that brings me into a segue, which is, I want to wish all of our veterans a Happy Veterans Day and thank them for serving our country. You know, we live in the land of the free and one of the things that makes us that way is our elections. It is our democracy. So thank you all for going out and voting yesterday. I want to thank everybody who did that. You honor your veterans when you do that. So I hope everybody enjoys the long weekend. And again, Happy Veterans Day to everybody. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So yesterday, I had the honor and the pleasure of serving as a poll worker in Ward Five. I've been a voter protection attorney for about 20 years. And I've been assigned to different polling locations in Nashua. Yesterday was the first time I got to work in my own ward. But I, you know, over those, over that time period, you know, as a voter protection attorney, I've observed, you know, the polling places, different polling places and different wards in Nashua. And I must say, I've, you know, the administration of the elections, you know, in every place that I've been assigned to has been conducted flawlessly. The moderators, the selectmen, the poll workers, you know, they've all done great jobs. And, you know, like in Ward Five yesterday, you know, these, for those of you who don't know, these people who volunteer to be poll workers, they have to go to a training. And then the night before the election, they spend a couple of hours or more setting up the polling place. And then the day of the election, they're there for about 18 hours. And, you know, my hat is off to them. In Ward Five, we had, you know, the moderator, the selectmen, the clerk, the ward clerk, and the poll workers. You know, there are Democrats, there are Republicans, there are undeclareds. And they all, you know, worked together, cooperated with each other. You know, they all worked very, very hard for the sole purpose of making sure the election ran smoothly, that it was transparent, honest, and transparent. And so my hat is off to those poll workers. And, you know, throughout the city, not only in Ward Five. I did, you know, somebody did speak to me during yesterday's, and I should mention, Ward Five, we had almost 5,000 ballots cast in the election. It was actually 4,916. So quite a number for, other than a presidential election. But someone did come up to me and they asked me, "Could you please do me a favor? Would you tell your fellow Aldermen to get close enough to the microphone?" Because, you know, they say, you know, our hearing is not great. We can't hear exactly and they keep fading in and out. So I asked my fellow Aldermen, myself included, "Make sure you get close enough to the microphone so that, you know, people can hear what you're saying." I also wanted to thank Commissioner Susi for coming tonight. He's a Ward Five, former Ward Five Alderman and still a resident of Ward Five. And another Ward Five resident, Victoria Sheehan, who is the Commissioner of Transportation, is unfortunately leaving to take a new job in Washington. She's done a terrific job for New Hampshire. And New Hampshire is going to miss her, but I'm sure she will do well in her new job. Unfortunately, she's selling her house and moving to the Washington area. And I wish her the best of luck. And I wanted to compliment my fellow Aldermen, especially those on the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. I watched that, your last meeting. It was a long meeting. But I was really impressed with, you know, the members of the committee and there were some other Aldermen who came to the meeting. You know, I thought your questions, there was reference to Director Cummings. You know, I thought you asked very good questions. You didn't back away from asking him tough questions. I was really impressed with the way you handled it. And so thank you very much for doing that. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So first, I also would like, well, I think I'd like to start by recognizing Veterans Day. We didn't receive the muster orders that we do, but traditionally, there's a parade that steps off at 11 to 11. Yep, so from 11:11 at Holman Stadium going south down Main Street, everybody should come out and celebrate that with us. I do understand that it is taking place because I've talked to the bus company and they're all ready to go. So I definitely invite people to come and honor veterans and their families and the sacrifices that they've made over the years to make our country what it is. I would invite people who considered the items on the ballot surrounding the Constitutional Convention to research that and consider what it means to veterans who have stepped forward to be willing to make the ultimate sacrifice to defend our Constitution. I just thought that we should put that in perspective. Additionally, I'm working with a nonprofit organization called Operation Enduring Welcome. So if you'd like to buy dinner for a veteran, we are purchasing dinners for homeless veterans on Veterans Day. It's $7 a meal, so a pretty good deal for anybody. You can go to Joanne's Kitchen to pick that up or you could check on, you could get involved through Operation Enduring Welcome. But it's important to make veterans feel welcome and recognized on Veterans Day, but it's also important to make sure that everyone is equally welcome and that people who are living in our city and maybe trying to find a place for themselves after unfortunate circumstances are recognized for who they are and what they've been and seen as their best selves rather than on their worst days. I had the pleasure of spending 14 hours or so at the polls myself. I would like to thank Alderman Kelly for providing two totems that I could lean on for most of that time. It's a great opportunity for anyone who's an elected official or involved in your community to get to know that community, to see them, people coming out, talking to you on both sides of the aisle. As another of my fellow Aldermen pointed out, we are all standing next to each other in the cold. We're all sharing hand warmers, coffee when available. So you'd get to see another side of the community. You get to exchange ideas. I find it very rewarding every year. But this year particularly, I was struck by a group of younger men who were going in to say, and I caught pieces of their conversation and they said they were voting for their younger sister to make sure that she has rights that are recognized and that she has a future. Regardless of exactly what they were referring to, I appreciate that. And I caught another father who was carrying his daughter on his shoulders and said something to the effect of, "Yes, we're going in to vote. We're going to vote for your future. That's what this election is about. That's what every election is about." So watching the parents bringing their kids and instilling in them the commitment to our community, to our nation, that's tangible. It's a little bit more impactful for me than just saying the Pledge of Allegiance for the sake of saying it. Putting words to action and cooperating and working cooperatively to create the societies that we live in, I deeply appreciate. I do appreciate the gentleman who came up and tried to explain to me that we were about to, he watches Channel 16 every night, so I know you're watching. And he said, he thought it was strange that we were buying an empty police cruiser. I get it now. It's an MT-55 police cruiser, so ha. Took me a little bit, but I finally got it there in the end. So I just want to express appreciation of the people of Ward Four who came out to vote. I want to express appreciation for the people working at the polls, all those long days, our moderator and clerk, Barry Cardin, Fred Davis, Stacy Lawton, all of the people who worked tirelessly. The police officer, not only just trying to make sure that the polls worked, but coming out to check on the people who are holding signs to give us updates as to the count, like really making it a community event. I think it was a great experience as always and I very much appreciate it. I know all the other Ward Aldermen are equally proud of their wards as well. They didn't have the Board President working at theirs, so just putting that out there. I'd like to appreciate, I would like to express appreciation to her for all of her tireless work as well, at both the board level and at the community level. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to wish all the veterans a Happy Veterans Day, especially those that are sitting around the horseshoe. Alderwoman Timmons, hopefully I get this right. Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Jettie. And, yeah, that's everyone. And a soon-to-be veteran, if Alderman Sullivan's son get through his career at West Point.
Long way to go.
Also, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter's annual auction. It's back after the pandemic. I know Alderwoman Kelly was there. She sits on the board. I saw several other local leaders there. State Representative Fran Nutter Upham was there as well and many other folks there raising money for charity. It was a great event. They did a very awesome job of putting together all these great auction items. I do know that he's not here, but Dinner with Jim, it must have been at least $5, $10,000 if that went for. I say sarcastically out loud. But it really was a great event. I'm glad he put that up there to. But it really was a great event, I'm glad he put that up there to raise money for the Soup Kitchen. I know I made a bid, and I'm sure it'll be thrown in my face at some point during public comment, but I think it's a great showing that we're getting back into the community, having these in-person events, and bringing everyone back to raise such awareness to homelessness and making sure that people that can eat and afford to get free access to milk, canned goods, fresh food, and daily lunch and dinner at the Soup Kitchen. Also, in regards to voting, yesterday was, I didn't go the way I thought it was going to go, is the best way I can phrase it, but I was at Ward Seven in the morning, and I ended my day at Ward Five, and it was very busy throughout the day, and kudos to all the candidates who put themselves out there to run, it's a very difficult thing to do. And just the city workers, the poll workers, the city clerk, they really had a great election last night, and I think the results from Nashua statewide and nationwide are very telling about where our country wants to go, and I think normalcy is where we want to be. But thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't think I've ever been accused of not speaking loud enough. When I started as Alderman, my husband used to send me text messages saying, you're not talking loud enough, you're not talking loud enough, so I started pulling the microphone closer and talking, so I don't think I'm one of those. But I want to first, by thanking Commissioner Suce for coming out and taking time from his schedule to explain this to us and the people. There's even a lot more than that to unfold, but I appreciated his time, and I want to thank all those veterans out there. And as Alderman Lopez said, the parade goes off at 11:00 to 11:00 from Holman Stadium, goes down Main Street, and ends at the Elm Street School. We usually see so many people out on that, and I think it's supposed to be good weather, so I hope to see our citizens out there. I know that I will be walking in the parade, maybe a little slower this year because of the foot surgery, but I will be walking in that parade. I think it's the least I can do to thank veterans. I also want to thank all the election workers and so on, and I want to thank Clerk Sue Lovering, who was with Mr. Healy, Clerk Healy, through that. She came to Ward Three, and I know she went to other wards with him, so I appreciated her doing that, giving a helping hand to, you know, a person who's holding that job. And I'd like to thank the Nashville PD who came to my rescue. We weren't as fortunate as to have a quiet time, but we only had one disruption, which is a great thing. In previous years, we've had one. It was the same person from the past two years. So Nashville PD came out, spoke to them. It got a little bit ugly, but they did their job, and it made, I think, all of us feel a little bit safer. There was a point when I did not feel safe, and I tried to escape and could not, as he chased after me. So it did get very scary, and it got scary for those that were holding the signs, so I think Alderman Karen said something that kind of hit me, see something, say something. And I think that's important, when we see something, whether it be at the polls, it doesn't matter whether you're Democrat, Republican, undeclared, or whatever, step up and say something. I think sometimes we become afraid to say something, but I do appreciate that. And getting to the landfill, as a state rep, I took a tour with other state reps through the landfill. It was amazing. I know it sounds silly, but it was. It was amazing to hear how they do the things that they do, and they answered all of our questions. We all got on a bus, and it was hot that day, and it was a nice air-conditioned bus, and there were times when we could get out, and we could look, and we answered those questions. As far as the landfill building is concerned, I am so glad to see that happen, as Parkman Rex lives, and Alderwoman Karen knows this, lives in Ward Three at Greeley Park. This Halloween, they did the haunted house. I told them they actually didn't have to decorate it, because just walking through it normally is really scary, but they did. I said, when you turn the lights out, it looked better than it had, which is the truth. If you go to the landfill and you see the trailer that our employees are sitting in, it's horrible. I'm sure that almost all of the aldermen here have at some point taken a tour of all of our public works, all of our public works buildings, all of the landfill and so on. I highly recommend it. I was honored that Director Photo took me personally around to every single department, and I got to meet people, and I got to talk to everybody, and I got to ask them the questions. It made me feel connected, and I understood those requests that they have and why they have them, so I strongly do recommend that. This weekend, I went to an event for the Nashville Community Music School. I don't know if any of you know that they used to be in the Ward Four downtown area, they've now moved to Ward Three, they got a better site, nothing against Ward Four, but they now have a stage and so on, they'll be having a recital soon, but they had an event the first time in three years since COVID, and it was a charity event, and I got to witness a lot of young people and older people singing, playing music. I sent Alderman Karen a video of one of her constituents, and I think she's like eight years old, who was singing, it was only a 20-second clip, but I was so impressed. I was so impressed with Executive Director Lindsey Rinaldi's ability to bring this place together, and I think it's really good, and it is a tiny gem that we have in our city, and I think we need more of that there. I also want to comment about the amount of young people, and I'm talking like five-years-old, three-years-old, two-years-old, that were showing up at the polls with their parents, and I just kept saying, thank you. I think teaching our children young is the best way to show democracy and to show that it is important to get out there and vote. And lastly, I would like to congratulate Alderwoman Kelly. You did an amazing job, and it isn't easy to run outside of Nashua. Nashua's a city, and all the other surrounding communities or towns, and it's the townies versus the cities kind of type of mentality, and even if they're small, little cities, they're still different than Nashua. They have different ways of thinking, and sometimes they look at Nashua as something that's different. So thank you so much for getting out there and speaking to people outside of Nashua, because I know you had to do that. I think that was pretty amazing. And I'd like to thank Alderman O'Brien for going back up there. He's much stronger than I am, I couldn't do it for a fourth time, so thank you so much, and thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Real quick, thanks to the veterans. I have become, over the past two years, intimately knowledgeable of what a veteran is, how they, what they face in their daily duties to this country and the sacrifice that they make. Words like discipline and sacrifice are words that I have become familiar with, and it really is, now when I see a veteran, I have a whole new appreciation for what it is they do, especially in these times, not to discount any other time that other veterans served, but you just never know. And especially now, to raise your hand and to step up for your country, to serve something bigger than you, I really have admiration for that, so thank them. Election Day yesterday, and Ward Nine went off without a hitch. I wasn't there hours, I was there for about 15 minutes, which really is a tribute to the folks that run the elections. I was in and out, and it really is, it's your neighbors, it's the people that run the elections, and I hear all the stuff that goes on in this country, and I just think that that's another planet, because I can't imagine anything nefarious going on in our city, because it just, it works so smoothly. So hats off to them. And finally, thanks to Alderman O'Brien, Meritantius, and Chief Rourke for coming out to my second ward meeting last week. We had, how would you characterize that turnout?
I thought it was very good. It was a little light, but...
You're very generous to say that, thank you.
It was very good.
I appreciate...
I wish more.
Yeah, me too, but I appreciate you coming out and talking to the Ward Niners, and that's it, thanks.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, and I didn't mean that to be sleight of hand, you know, but probably fit right in exactly what I'm going to say further down the road here. But I thank the aldermen for some of your accolades or congratulations, and I would like to thank particularly the residents of Ward Nine of sending me back from my eight term up at the State House, and while the aldermen were giving me some of their congratulations, it just dawned on me, I'm the only one sitting on this board that is going to be a state rep this term, so maybe it's your congratulations, like fattening the lamb for the slaughter, I don't know. But I look forward to it, because I've always believed the important thing, one must know what one hand is doing with the other hand, and that is the key. And what I do up there will hopefully come back to benefit Nashua. So thank you again to all in Ward Nine, and then I also would like to thank, you know, wish congratulations to all the candidates that did win and were successful, but I would like to thank everybody that signed up and went through the whole complete process and didn't win. You know, listen, to play the game, you've got to be willing to participate and to be that man in that arena, and I thank them all as part of our, you know, being members of our democratic society, to provide a choice for the voter to make. And, you know, myself personally, I think they made the right one of me, but that's it. But anyways, but to give the voter the perfect choice, and so I think, I thank everyone. And I'd like to recognize the city's clerk office, I agree with Alderman Sullivan, it went off without a hitch. I was there at dawn's early light, you know, 6 o'clock in the morning to the end. My old bones can't take it like they used to, but it was a lot of fun. But I would like to thank my wife, who kept my sanity during the non-busy hours while I was there, and a couple of aldermen, Alderman Dowd would stop by to say aye and wish me luck and everything else. And then finally, to our veterans, I grew up, my grandfather from Dorchester, you know, was one of those kids that ended up in France, World War I. You know, he taught me a lot, you know, different things, I remember our conversations on World War I, and the 11th hour on the 11th day in the 11th month was the armistice and how it ended. Told me such things as, never be the third man on the match in trench warfare. And he also taught me the universal colorful language of a soldier, which I greatly appreciate. But I think back to what it was, and my father who served in World War II, and all the veterans of our community. I would like to say Happy Veterans Day, but I'm sure it will bring back some of the other veterans who aren't here, you know, and that may be what Memorial Day is. But the thing is, to our veterans, I would just much rather to leave it a thank you. Thank you for your commitment of service. Without that commitment of service, I don't think we would have the America that we have right now. So I like to say that, and that's basically it. So thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Lopez.
I apologize for coming back again, but I just, when I was talking, I was trying to name so many people who put their time and effort in, and I was trying to talk about bipartisanship and community, I forgot to mention Arthur Crafty. And Arthur Crafty is an Aldermanic alumni. He was also there all day at the, working at the polls. I believe he was at the last election as well. Former Alderman Crafty has run against me definitely two times, possibly three times, and the last time, he was very clear, he says, I do it to keep you honest, to make sure that you're honest. I remain committed to being unnecessarily honest. I appreciate his presence and willingness to serve in whatever capacity he's able to, and he himself is a veteran too, so I thought it would be important to recognize him, and I apologize for forgetting to mention him earlier. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez, I stood beside Alderman Crafty for about 12 hours yesterday, so I too would like to thank all the election workers, Ward Seven, all the wards, but Mr. Senate, thank you for your work. It's a lot of work. I mean, you don't just set up the night before and, you know, spend 15, 16 hours on Election Day. I know my son, being a ward clerk, you know, he's making phone calls for weeks beforehand trying to recruit people that can help, and that's a big job in itself, getting people to show up and having enough coverage so that when people get there to vote, the line's on out the door. It's a lot of work, it really is, and I really, really appreciate all of you who, you know, took the time yesterday to vote, those who worked at the polls, those who put their names on the ballots, win or not, I admire you, Alderwoman Kelly, for the work you did. You should have won that one, but you'll get it next time. Really, really appreciate that you put yourself out there to do that, and congrats to you, Alderman O'Brien. Oh, I also would like to thank City Clerk Healy, and I wasn't aware that the former clerk, Sue Lovering, was out there doing that yesterday, so that's really great, I appreciate her too. We had a National Police Officer, as all the polls did, but this Officer Matt Foss was wonderful. He was just, you know, he engaged with the kids, you know, people that brought their kids in to vote, you know, you know, one of the kids says, hey, I know you, she was probably four or five years old, her kindergarten class had gone on a tour to the police department the prior week, and he was all thrilled that she remembered him, and he was pretty amazing, pretty amazing guy. Very impressed with him.
Alderman Willshere.
Yes.
One last thing, there was a state police officer that was with Senator Hassan yesterday in Ward One, and I went over and talked to him, since he was standing all by himself, and he said to me, he said, he wanted to let everybody know that the state police so much appreciate the police department here in Nashua for all the work they do to help the state police, and they said, please keep up the good work with, and we support them, and they support us in a timely manner to help keep everybody safe.
So one of the things that came up at Ward Four yesterday was the lack of rules, you know, in different languages. Ward Four is a very diverse ward, right? We have a lot of Latinos and people who speak Spanish, and my son, who is not fluent in Spanish, but got, you know, they kept calling him over because, you know, he could speak some Spanish, but I think we need to encourage the Secretary of State's Office to give us things that are rules and such that are in Spanish as well as English. That was, I was kind of impressed with him, because he actually got through it and, you know, helped about a dozen people who didn't understand what the questions were, and it was pretty good. So I also would like to wish all the veterans a Happy Veterans Day, those of you in this chamber and throughout the city. I'm also going to look for now committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
I think I already said joint special on the 17th.
Okay, joint special. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Madam President.
Oh, Alderman Moran.
So, thank you, my apologies. November 15th, we'll be having a PDC meeting. We're going to continue to talk about outdoor dining and the rezoning of Amherst Street, and I believe out of this committee that will have legislation that will be proposed for the fees and rezoning Amherst Street. So I encourage everyone to come, and so we can do the work at the committee, not haggle at the full board, and eventually it comes back to us. So please, everyone, come on November 15th. Thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everybody about the annual June Karen Senior Alden. She said, you know, it wasn't all about her, but that's okay, can't be about her. And I also want to thank my colleague, O.B., for winning yesterday's election. And I have a constituent in Ward Five, and she said, you never say a peep. I hear you, I see you, and thank you, Ms. Lynch, I know you are out to vote in that ward.
Alderman Lopez.
Human Affairs is meeting on November 21st at 7:00, Monday.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the November 9, 2022 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls, we are adjourned at 9:20 PM. Thank you, everyone.